This has to do with Fetter's Run, O U L stream restoration. Mr. James?
I will yield some time to Denise Cruz, but just as a little prelude to that. This is the opportunity to get $2 million plus, free money, from the loan that we will get for upgrading the Lawrence project. And it'll be out by O S U and will help mitigate some of the erosion situations out there. Denise, I'll yield to you, please.
Thank you. So, we are in the process of getting Mike's Lawrence Street Upgrade Project out to bid. And because we are taking a loan on that project, Ohio EPA has a program where they take 0.1% of the interest that Mike would pay on his loan and put it into stream restoration projects. So what this legislation does is says you, on behalf of Mike, are willing to sponsor you, on behalf of me, for this program. This is necessary for our grant application, or I'm sorry, for our nomination, which is due on August 28th. What this project will do is restore about 1,000 feet of Fetter's Run from College Avenue down to the last bridge on the O U L property. And we'll be doing some plantings and moving stream around and creating wetlands. We've been working with OU on this. They're very excited about the project and that we're willing to make this kind of investment on their property.
Does anybody have any questions? One thing I might add to...
You go ahead.
This, once again, will really make that area very, very nice, and it will not disturb any of the existing bridges. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Bobbitt, question?
Denise, so hopefully we will get this grant, and then this will all, I was reading your email, this is all gonna, you're gonna start working on this maybe March, April of next year, 2021, correct?
Our plan is to start, yes, before the end of March, so we can take the bat trees down.
Okay, yes.
And, and we're still working out some details, so we may have a separate contract for tree removal to make sure we get those down in time. Part of the interesting thing on this is convincing Ohio EPA that we have everything pulled together and can, can start the project right away, which is unusual for this program.
Okay, that's wonderful. Can I just ask you for an update on the run that's off of Fair Avenue?
Lateral B.
Yeah, lateral B, thank you.
With everything going on, we did not get the FEMA grant that we were looking for on that, so we've, we've kind of pushed that back. There's a new FEMA program coming. They've kind of revamped the whole program, and I'm learning about that this week. And we'll be looking at opportunities for us to apply for that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. James?
Two readings.
Two readings, and I have Mrs. Tina as your second. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Temporary Resolution 89-20. This has to do with the Community Development Department coming through Economic Development. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, I'll ask our Community Development Director, Linda, to come up and discuss this. This is an opportunity presented itself recently, and it's something she has to act on fairly quickly.
Yes, so HUD has a competitive grant program. It's a lead hazard reduction program. Grant requests are minimum of $1 million, and so we're looking to partner with the county, with community action. Not sure that we could take on that much work for ourselves, but this would be for lead reduction, primarily lead-based paint for homes with children under six. And so they could be homeowners, they could be rentals. Homes have to be of a certain age, usually, you know, older than 1960. We have quite a few of those. And for folks with low incomes that meet the income guidelines. There's also a supplemental funding grant for what they call healthy homes, and that's for other hazard reductions. So, you know, mold that would cause asthma, fire safety, you know, other, other types of hazard reduction modifications that we would want to make. We're asking for one reading because the application is due on August 24th, and that's the next time that you meet. I only found out about this a week ago Friday, and, you know, participated in a webinar last Monday. So I apologize for the, for the lateness and the request for, for only one reading, but that's why.
Linda, is there a match requirement on this grant?
There is a 10% match. We can use CBG funds for that. We could also find other funds from partners, you know, for those dollars, yeah.
Right, and you mentioned that county, Pickering, City of Pickering is also going to be involved in this grant process?
We're looking to others, right, in Fairfield County, yeah.
Do we have the 10% match?
We do.
Any other questions for Linda?
So with that, you were talking about like rentals, you said also, but do homeowners get the first choice, or, I know there's things they have to meet, but do...
We could, I mean, we could have a priority of homeowners.
Because I think homeowners should be priority, maybe, just because...
We can, we can structure it that way, yeah. It's just, it's eligible for both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because then if they're, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, the language about the partner says, "Partners such as." Does that mean you don't have them lined up yet, or they're not on board, or like Pickerington or the county?
We're still having conversations. I don't have anything signed from any other communities, but, you know, we're working on it, yeah.
So, there was a presentation late last week, Linda viewed a conference...
It's a webinar.
...webinar on this. So it kind of presented itself rather quickly, and then they have a deadline of the 24th, so that's why we're here and asking for suspension tonight. So it's, I think it's a really good opportunity, and, you know, we know there's houses out there that need this mitigation.
And there's also priority given to communities that have not received the money in the past, so we would be a first-time applicant.
So, my question is, if you don't have other partners, such as the county, or Pickerington, or Metro Housing, I mean, is that problematic for us?
It could be, and in which case we may not apply. I don't want to take on more than we can handle. So, yeah, if we, if others don't step up, and if they don't want to be a part of this, we may not apply, in which case I'll let you know.
Can you help me understand why they wouldn't want to apply? I'm just curious.
I don't, yeah, I, I don't know why they wouldn't.
Okay.
But just to say that I, I would not want to submit a $1.4 million application on our own. I don't know that, I think that might be more than we could handle.
Matchwise?
Matchwise, just capacity-wise, just having that many projects to do. It is over three and a half years, so, you know, we would look at that in terms of how much we thought we could, you know, how many homes we thought we could do within three and a half years. Trying to weigh those factors.
Mr. Hall, can you please repeat your question? I did not hear it.
No, I was just wondering, what, what would be the factors that, excuse me, that might cause us to withdraw, if we, if our partners withdraw? And I, and I just guessed that it might be the match aspect of it, and Linda clarify.
Thank you.
Yes.
But if it's three years, I mean, is, do you have to come up with the match all at once, or do you come up with the match in three years?
I don't know for sure. My guess is over three years, we would have, we would have over the life of the grant to contribute the match.
Okay, I'm sure, that's, I mean, that's hopeful right there.
That's a little easier.
Yeah, that's easier, yeah.
Right.
So, yeah, what we're asking for tonight is the, the ability for Linda to submit the grant application, working with our partners, and move forward from there. So really, we're just authorizing her to move forward with this process.
Yeah, I think the important clarification is that we're authorizing them to apply, but if they get it, we still have to accept it when the time comes, and so there's still opportunity to not move forward if, if things end up not coming together the way Ms. Disher thinks they might.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, would you be second on that, please?
Okay. This is coming through safety. It's a resolution to increase receipts, and it's for the Police Law Enforcement JAG Grant Fund. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you. I want to have Chief Pilar come up to the podium and speak on this JAG grant.
Yeah, good evening. This is pretty much a standard grant we, we apply for every year. We normally have to have partners. We've actually been able to capture it all this year, so, and generally, we use this money for our body cameras, mostly the amount that equals the $24,000 is used for our body cam program.
Thank you. And as he said, this is annually that we submit for this grant. I'll be asking for one reading tonight.
And I have Mr. McDaniel as your second.
Yes, he is, thank you.
Any questions for Chief Pilar? Okay. And I think you're staying up there for the next one, too, right?
I am, ma'am.
Go ahead, chief.
This is actual supplemental to our 2019 JAG grant. They offered $38,000 more for coronavirus and COVID-19-related mitigation, so essentially, we're trying, it's either use or lose, and we're trying to capture as much of that as we can for, for different equipment. It's, it can't supplant, so I can't take this money and not spend current. It's supposed to be above your standard budget. So, we look for equipment that we've had our eye on and wanted and had uses for, and we could relate that to changes in the way we function because of coronavirus, and that's, that's why this got approved.
And we'll be asking for one reading tonight. Thank you, chief.
And I have Mr. Matlin as your second.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other resolutions to come before finance? All right, if there are not, I will go to other discussion items. We'll start with departmental updates, and Mayor Scheffler, I've got you on deck.
Well, thank you. An unexpected pleasure, but I am prepared to talk about this. So as of last week, I had several conversations with Congressman Stevers, and he was confident that the minimum amount we would get from the CARES money is to re-characterize the money that's already passed for revenue replacement, and that that would be the minimum that would, we would get because the House, as we know, passed a HEROES Act, which had something upward of $36 million for the city of Lancaster, and there was negotiation between the House and the Senate that would probably get pared down, but it would be something more. The ringer in the whole thing is President Trump signing of the executive orders with the additional unemployment and the three other issues that he passed, moratorium on the payroll tax. So, I don't think anybody knows as of today what's happening to the negotiation between the House and the Senate. I do know that the Senate went home, but McConnell told them to be prepared to be back in Washington within 24 hours to vote, so that's the latest. I mean, it's fogier today than it was last Friday. It doesn't help a whole lot, but we're still optimistic. So the, the CARES money has already been passed. We, we got, we have in the bank $1 million, which can only be used to spend for COVID-related items, which we are compiling those from all the departments and looking to see what other needs there would be in the city, things such as touchless sinks, towel dispensers, soap dispensers, and toilets, which we don't have anywhere and are allowable under the grant. And probably, we're going to be able to spend a fraction, maybe $200,000 to $300,000 of that million dollars, and the rest, if we don't come up for a COVID-related use, we have to give it back. So that would be available for revenue replacement, and there's an additional, probably $2.5 million that the state hasn't released yet from the other 870 million that's still sitting with the state that is intended for local governments. The latest on that is that there's an intention for that to be done through the Controlling Board rather than the legislature, since the legislature is in somewhat of a turmoil now, and it can be done through the Controlling Board. So that might end up in our account in the near future, but again, until Congress changes the character of the money that's already passed, it's only spendable for COVID-related direct expenses.
Any questions? Do we have any other departmental updates?
It's really hard to follow that up, but I just wanted to give you a couple of updates from transit. First, I wanted to say thanks to Mayor Scheffler and Burr Bridge with the Connection West. If you have driven at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Pierce, you've seen a bus shelter that has gone up. Eldot, Greg Kents, was willing to give up that bus shelter that was being underutilized, that was on the bike path, thanks to the recommendation of Mayor Scheffler. He found a great new home for it. Burr Bridge and his volunteers went over, took the entire shelter apart in less than a day, took it over to Connection West, reconnected the entire bus shelter. They've ordered new plexiglass for it, they're going to paint it, and it's going to be a really nice addition, and really nice for our passengers to have a huge shelter to wait in, in a really nice spot. That shelter was, is really large. If you haven't seen it, please go drive by and see it. It's a really large shelter. It would have been much too big to put at our downtown hub, so this is a great place for it, and we're really excited about that. Also, as you recall, we started our Easy Fair mobile app, and that is for cashless fares. We just did a very soft kickoff by putting it on social media. Again, thanks to the mayor for helping spread that on social media. That is really all we did to publicize this, other than signs on our buses, and we've sold almost $300 in passes in one month. People are loving the option to have cashless fares and to download it on their mobile device and just show the driver. It's working great, so we're really excited. It's working great, so we're really excited about that. Since we did do the Easy Fair app, now they can purchase our tickets not only on the Easy Fair app, but they can purchase our tickets on the Uber app, the Move It app, the Transit app. So it just opened it up a lot for all of our passengers. Also, if you did not hear, the Ex-Church, as you know, in the last couple of years, have been very supportive of public transit, and they continue to pay fares for our passengers as a way to open up transportation for everyone. They did a, for the month of August, a Free Fare Friday. So all of our loops are free every Friday through the month of August, so that anybody can ride, get back to school stuff, or whatever they need to do through the month of August. So we're really excited about that. So if you see, if you see Steve Rao or anybody from the Ex-Church, again, say thank you to them. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was, I brought with me our Assistant Transit Director. As you know, we took over operations in January, and then COVID hit early March, so it's been very, very crazy for us in the transit world. But Chaslin, you want to stand up and wave? But this is Chaslin. She's our new Assistant Transit Director. So if there's ever a time that I'm not able to be at council, you might see Chaslin's face. Feel free to stop by the office and say hi. She's a little bit shy, so you have to warm her up. But she's been a huge addition to us. She has a doctorate in HR, so she's been awesome to work with in the transit field and helping get all the drivers switched over from ride right. So with that, any questions? Feel free to call her up and ask her questions, too. Thanks.
Any other departmental updates?
Everybody's taller than me. I want to give you a quick update on our construction projects. COVID or not, we've been very busy. The Fifth Sixth Forest Rose Project, the, the last of the, the pipe is going in this week, and then we'll start into street restoration and paving and striping and, and all of those things. They expect to be completed by the end of October. Union Mulberry, again, we have all the pipe in. They have, and that's another place you should drive by and see, they have lowered the Mulberry a good two feet. So they have the, they've lowered the street and put the base in so that the residents can get in and out. They will be starting, they have started curbs, sidewalks, and driveways, and they will be starting paving at the end of this month. And they expect to be done sometime in mid-October. Mulberry Broad, you probably didn't blink and missed that whole project because they were in and out in about two weeks. That was repairing some dislocated storm sewers in there, and we were in and out so that, that the street could be paved. That was a good thing with COVID because the library and the churches were closed, so we didn't inconvenience anybody there. The last one is the Zane Alley Project. We discovered a collapsed sewer pipe between City Hall and the annex in the alley back here. We were able to bring Truco in to replace that pipe. And as Mike Nixon was looking at other areas on that pipe, we found another bad spot, which is right back here. We had Truco come in. They were going to replace that pipe. And when they excavated, there's an AT&amp;T duct directly on top of the pipe, so we can't get to it. So we've, we're in the process of buttoning up the site so we can reopen the alley, and we're trying to get quotes to line the sewer pipe from City Hall down to the municipal bill, the court building. And we are looking, hopefully, to get that done this fall. So we may be in for legislation, emergency legislation, to get that done. The section that we found here behind the building is starting to collapse, so we're, we're very concerned about that.
Any questions for Denise?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other departmental updates? Go on once, go on twice. Okay. President, oh, I will turn over the agenda to you for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We have two ordinances coming before us tonight, both coming from the Law Committee. Temporary Ordinance 15-20 is an ordinance granting indemnification to the next report authority for real property that transfers from the city to the Port Authority. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, just, just real quickly, and I think you covered it. We had a conversation in our meeting about this particular issue. I think that it's completely warranted. There is a piece of property that is in the process of being transferred that could have some brownfield issues. And it certainly wouldn't be appropriate for us to expect the Port Authority to, to accept liability for cleaning something up when they're doing us a favor to transfer, to accept the transfer and sell it so they can work on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Questions about this particular ordinance? Mr. James?
Just real quick, on the, did you say brownfield on, on the property? Or is there an issue with the property?
Well, we don't know for sure, or I don't remember that particular part of the conversation. Stephanie, is, are there some known issues around toxic parts of the, the property that are going to require cleanup?
The cleanup's already been done. There's a covenant not to sue with some conditions and restrictions in place on development of that property. And according to the law, we are notifying the purchasers of those conditions and the restrictions. But because the property is passing from us to the Port Authority to purchaser, obviously the Port Authority is going to be in change of command, and we just want to make sure that they're indemnified in the event that the developers, that we should not be liable because the city's done everything we can and got the covenant not to sue. But just in the event that, that purchaser does something with the property they're not supposed to do, and it becomes some kind of legal issue, we want to make sure that the Port Authority doesn't get stuck with that. Because our, our interests are always going to align with the Port Authority's interests as a city. So there shouldn't be an issue between the two of us. And it's only really fair that, that the city take care of that.
Further questions on this particular ordinance? Mr. Hall, what's your pleasure?
We're going to ask for one reading, and I'm going to ask Becky, since she was part of the conversation, to be my second.
Okay, so suspension tonight after one reading with Ms. Teener as the second. And then, Mr. Hall, back to you on 1620, which is an ordinance allowing for annexation for property contiguous to the city?
And this has been on the table for quite some time. It's actually the Merrill Bowers property that's adjacent to some of our property on Wilson Road. And we want to get that taken care of tonight also, if, if we can.
Okay, questions on this ordinance? Mr. Matlin?
So even if we authorize them to do the annexation, it still has to go through the whole process, right?
It does.
Notifying the neighbors and...
It, it does. Essentially, what we're doing is authorizing the Law Director to sort of initiate the process.
Further questions? With suspension tonight, what's your pleasure on the second?
My, I would hope that one would do that, if that's all right.
Mr. McDaniel is the second with suspension this evening. Very good. The only other thing that I'll mention, well, two things very quickly. One is that you received an email from the mayor that tonight in New Business, he will be asking that council concur with his appointment of a member to the tree commission. And then also, in an effort to kind of keep us away from each other as much as possible and to minimize the traffic after the meeting, if you have legislation that we are planning to have passed tonight, if you would sign that in between this meeting and the regular session of council over here with the clerk, she would appreciate that. With that, I'll turn it back to the chairwoman.
Thank you. Are there any other items for finance? Seeing none. I'm sorry, Orman, did you have your hand up?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Very nice. It is 6:37. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at approximately 6:40-ish.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects, whom I volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop with a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for.
Come into the Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please join me in a word of prayer. O mighty Godfather of us all, we are thankful for this day and your blessings. We are thankful for how you continue to lead, guide, and direct us, and we ask that you would do so again tonight. Lord, how we need you, and we place in your hands the work that is set before us. May you help us to accomplish it and keep the best interests of the citizens of the city in mind as we do, and we'll give you all the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt, here. Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance. Let me just remind you, please, to ensure that your microphones are on. I did have one or two residents who suggested at times they have a difficult time hearing, particularly if you're not speaking directly into the microphone. So if you could ensure that you're getting as close as possible to it when you're speaking, particularly because we're only streaming it out, there really aren't any residents here tonight, that would be helpful. So thank you for, for doing that. And welcome back. It seems like it's been a long time since we've seen each other, but here we are once again. So appreciate you all being here tonight. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated July 13th, 2020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials?
I have three. Email dated July 20th, 2020 regarding cancellation of the August Code Enforcement Meeting submitted by Mr. Matlin. Email dated August 10th, 2020 regarding Finance Committee Agenda submitted by Mrs. Downhour. And finally, an email dated August 10th, 2020 regarding vote submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are none to be presented.
Are there any special presentations or awards this evening?
There are none to be presented.
Are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
During this time of our meeting, we set time aside for voters and taxpayers of the city to address city council. I don't see anyone from the public here tonight, and so unless anyone in the audience has a desire, I hear you're a real talkative man. Would you like to come and address city council? No. She's all good, all right. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Reports of standing committees?
There is one Public Works Committee meeting dated June 12th, 2020 submitted by Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
A motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the second reading of Temporary Resolution 85-20.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Lawrence Street Water Pollution Control Facility, LSWPCF upgrade project, offered by Mr. James, seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
This will be the second reading of this temporary resolution.
Second reading of Temporary Resolution 85-20. We'll now move to the first reading of a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 88-20.
A resolution agreeing to sponsor the Feder's Run OUL Stream Restoration Project by participating in the Water Resource Restoration Program, or Sponsor Program, in conjunction with the Lawrence Street Water Pollution Control Fund Upgrade with the Water Pollution Control Loan Program, offered by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
As Denise Cruz indicated in the Finance Committee meeting, this is the opportunity to take a lot of that interest that we would be paying on the loan we will receive for the upgrade to the Lawrence Street facility and restore a significant portion of the area out near the, near the college as well as the festival. And none of the bridges that now exist across that stream will be impacted by it. And this will help mitigate some of the potential erosion that we've seen there before.
What's your pleasure, Mr. James?
Two readings on that.
First, the two readings, then, on Temporary Resolution 88-20. Thank you. Temporary Resolution 89-20.
A resolution authorizing the Community Development Department to apply with community partners in Fairfield County for funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, heads FY '20 Lead Hazard Reduction Grant Program and Healthy Homes Supplemental Funding, offered by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President. This legislation will allow us to apply for a, a grant with the federal government for lead hazard reduction and for healthy home supplemental funding, which is up to 1.4 million dollars. This will be working in conjunction with our partners, Fairfield County, City of Pickford, hopefully. We have a grant date, filing date of August 24th, so we're going to ask for suspension on that. So, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on Resolution Temporary Number 89-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 89-20. Further discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
No, I think we discussed it in detail at the Finance Committee meeting. This is simply the opportunity to submit for the grant. Should the grant be received, then we can address the acceptance of that at that time.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to, the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporarily Number 89-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 89-20. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Nothing further.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 89-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 90-20.
A resolution to increase receipts and appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate of other sources, and appropriations with the county auditor and the Police Law Enforcement, JAG Grant Fund 2027, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the police chief's still here, I'm going to have him come up and explain these two temporary resolutions, or the next two temporary resolutions, even though we heard once from him during finance. This is mainly for the public, the viewing public.
Okay, ma'am. The first one, these are standard yearly grants you put in through the Burn JAG Grant through the federal government, and we put in for those every year, and we usually get accepted every year. We use most of that money, goes to our body camera program. The second one on the agenda is about a $38,000 grant. That was additional monies related to COVID, if we could relate equipment or sources above and beyond what we've already had budgeted to our response to the coronavirus, and we've applied for that to hopefully spend it all on equipment and stuff that we maybe had our eye on to help us out in that area.
Thank you, and we appreciate you applying for these grants. So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and waive the second and third readings on Temporary Resolution Number 90-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading, Temporary Resolution 90-20. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
None, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Ms. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, uh, engross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Number 90-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 90-20. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 90-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 91-20.
A resolution to increase receipts and appropriate from the unencumbered balance, amend the certificate of other sources, and appropriations with the county auditor and the Point 45 Police and Fire Levy Fund 2047, offered by Mrs. Bobbitt, seconded by Mr. Matlin.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading on Temporary Resolution Number 91-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 91-20. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
This is just going to allow us to use these grant dollars, $38,000. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bobbitt?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution Number 91-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 91-20. Discussion, Ms. Bobbitt?
No, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 91-20 passes nine to zero. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the first reading of Temporary Ordinance 15-20.
An ordinance granting indemnification, this is another hard one here now. Uh, indemnification to the Lancaster Port Authority by the City of Lancaster in regard to real property transfers from the city to the Port Authority and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Hall, seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President. We have a situation where we use the Port Authority for economic development purposes, and one of the vehicles that they use is disposing of land that we acquire or that we've had for a while. And one of the, uh, the aspects that I think that we believe is really important is that we don't ask them to accept any liability, um, associated with cleaning up the property or other potential factors, so, um, and we have a piece of property that this pertains to, so we're asking that City Council essentially indemnify the Port Authority on this issue. And I'm going to ask for suspension tonight.
Okay.
And Becky's going to be the second.
Great. Can we have your motion, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I knew that there was something after.
It's like 90 degrees in here, it's alright.
Do we just second it now?
It's alright.
No, 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 let me read the motion. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion, the council suspends its rules and waive the second and third reading of the ordinance temporarily numbered 15-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 15-20. Discussion, Mr. Hall?
No, not at this time, I think, I think we covered it.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, um, oh, yeah. Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporarily Numbered 15-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 15-20. Discussion, Mr. Hall?
No, I don't think so.
Discussion?
Looks like we've got a question.
Yeah. Discussion on the motion to pass, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, this is a question either for the mayor or Stephanie. Uh, the Port Authority has been buying land or property for us for quite some time. What triggered this? Is this just something we've overlooked long ago, or, um?
This is the former Anchor Hocking Plant 2 site, and, and it is, um, we have an offer to purchase it for economic development purposes, so.
But this isn't specific, this, this basically, or is this specific?
It's not specific, so we made it, um, so that it covers any property that the Port Authority would sell for the city. It's just that this specific site, because it has those conditions on development, um, is the reason we wanted to do it specifically for this property. But we figured, like I said in Finance Committee, typically the Port Authority and the city's interests are going to be aligned, and so there's no reason that the city shouldn't bear the cost of doing that, since the Port Authority is doing us the favor of, of taking on marketing and selling the property.
Sure, no, I, I agree with that, so I just, I like the fact that, you know, something, some, something triggered it, but we've created the blanket going forward, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good move. Thank you.
Very good. Further questions? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 15-20 passes nine to zero. Temporary Ordinance 16-20.
An ordinance authorizing the Law Director and City Prosecutor to prosecute and prosecute the proceedings necessary to annex contiguous territory into the City of Lancaster pursuant to Highway 5's Code, seven, section 709.16, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Hall, seconded by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, this is actually an issue that's been on the table for quite some time. The Merrill Bowers property, um, which has been, um, offered to the city, and we think that this is a good opportunity for us to take advantage of that offer, and we're going to ask for suspension.
Very good.
And, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of the ordinance temporarily numbered 16-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Ordinance 16-20. Discussion, Mr. Hall?
No, I don't think so.
Discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Hall?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporarily Numbered 16-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass, engross, and enter upon the written record Temporary Ordinance 16-20. Discussion, Mr. Hall?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Ordinance 16-20 passes nine to zero. Are there any further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, is there any action on tabled legislation this evening? If not, we'll move to unfinished business. Is there unfinished business this evening? If not, we'll move to new business. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask council to affirm my appointment of Simon Hall to the Tree Commission. I did send out, uh, earlier a brief bio of Mr. Hall. Any questions?
Any questions for the mayor, Ms. Teener?
Yes, Mrs. Teener?
I do, since I've been on council, you know, we've approved people and that. Do we go out and like, I mean, do we just like, somebody like, the administration knows, or do we put it somewhere now that Facebook is out there to see if people want to do it, like, in the community, maybe somebody that's not related to somebody that works for the city, or on, uh, somebody related to somebody on City Council or anything? Do we ever go out and maybe put it out there? There might be an arborist out there, or, or on a parks person, someplace that historical, maybe, that might want to be interested, that are citizens?
Yes, Park Superintendent Tharp, uh, has been looking for a person to fill this spot for a number of months, and, um, finally, uh, this person was nominated, and it turns out he has a deep appreciation of wood, and with a background, uh, as a farmer in cutting and utilizing wood to make furniture, et cetera, so he is uniquely qualified to do this job. But I believe, uh, Mr. Tharp probably talked to, um, six to eight people. They have to be a resident of the City of Lancaster is one of the criteria for this particular position.
But do we put it out there, like, maybe on the website if somebody's interested in, because nobody would know, and there's a position filled unless, you know, somebody goes and asks somebody?
I believe that he relies on the other members of the Tree Commission and their, um, acquaintances, uh, to, because they're obviously all very much into trees and wood to come up with candidates.
I'm just not calling them, I mean, I'm just like historical, all, they're all the, the boards and that, that's what I'm, because I've never, anytime, you know, somebody comes for an appointment, I've never seen it out there that somebody was looking. That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking, because I've had people, you know, actually, I have somebody right now is asking me about, you know, they want to be on the board, and I don't know anything, especially with COVID, you know, nothing's really going on, so.
Uh, if you have somebody that's interested in a board appointment, certainly get their information to me. We don't have any other openings on boards or commissions at the moment, uh, but I do keep a file of those people.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Teener. Further questions for the mayor on this appointment to the Tree Commission?
Maybe just a quick comment, if that's all right. I'm sorry, I saw Tom's hand go up too. I think Becky makes a really good point. I think it maybe potentially creates an opportunity for us to cultivate leadership over time. And we shouldn't wait until we have an opening to solicit interest in people who are willing or interested in making a voluntary commitment to our city. I know that the administration is really busy right now, but that could be an interesting parking lot issue. Looking for ways to solicit or identify those up-and-coming individuals in our community that could serve in a leadership role, and making sure that they have an appropriate understanding of the oversight responsibilities and their obligations once they're appointed would be a really good thing for us to do, to assure in the long run that we have a functioning city with new leadership being cultivated.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further questions or comments on this particular appointment? Mr. Stotin?
I was just going to make the motion to accept the nomination.
Okay.
Of Simon Hall to the Tree Commission.
So we have a motion on the floor to appoint Simon Hall or to affirm the mayor's appointment of Simon Hall to the Tree Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Mr. McDaniel at the second. Any discussion? Mr. Stotin?